Good evening, everyone. Is this working? Thank you, thank you for joining us here tonight. I'm Dr. Malta, the representative here in the first congressional district.
Not working?
Not working? Kind of is, kind of is.
Need more volume.
Do I need anything? We can just speak with each other? Oh, there it is. Well, again, welcome. And thanks for sending our town hall. Thanks to all those hand-buddies together here at Fairgrounds. It's making us feel welcome here. First of all, let's do some of the housekeeping here. You've found one of these on your seat. We'd love to have you fill that out with any of your comments, what your issues you're following most closely here. We'd love to have your email address so we can have you on our email newsletter list if you're not on it already. I promise no salesmen will call. It won't be used for campaign purposes, because that's illegal. And so this is strictly for having that communication with your representative and you. So that's good. Also, if you didn't have a chance to sign in to the sign-in sheets back there, that helps us know the Cayman Sauce as well. So, thank you for that. It's been about sixteen months since I was sworn into the US House of Representatives, so I'm, again, honored to be a representative here in the first district here and to have a... Lassen County is one of my areas here. Always admired the area and enjoyed it. When I was a state representative here in the Assembly or the State Senate, Lassen was just out of my jurisdiction. I've had to shop through Siskiyou and to Hayman County, so sometimes I travel through here, admire its beauty and some of the people I know as well. So, many, many things we can talk about here tonight, so I'll just speak for a little bit on some of the topics and then we'll open up your questions and comments. Let me, I think, open up with the situation of our nation. One of the most important things that we will have to solve is this fiscal situation. We have at Moen ticking a seventeen point five trillion dollar national debt. And it's a number that just rolls off the tongue easily, but when you think about all those zeros and how big that is and what that means in the next fifty years, whatever thing, that's huge. And a lot of layers of bureaucracy, of laws, of spending, of ideas, of debt that's been rolled up over the past that we've got to turn this ship around, because we can't leave this legacy for the next generations to come along. So, one of the important endeavors that I had as a scheduled priority committee was moving towards balancing our budget. And the House of Representatives, our budget chair, Paul Ryan, has had a plan that's... even though it sounds like it's a long time, his plan is to try and balance it within ten years. It's a fairly ambitious plan because of how tough it is to make reductions in spending or the type of things that you would need to do to make it bring it balanced. What we need to have is a stronger economy, with a robust, very vibrant economy, the income to the federal government at a fair rate of taxation, not just raising taxes thinking they're going to solve it, but a fair rate of taxation on more activity, because our economy is booming in the United States. We'd go a long way towards that, but also the discipline on the spending side is needed. And there's always examples people can find of things, why are we spending money on that? Why are we spending that much money on this? So, the Paul Ryan Plan is only one so far that actually even talks about or alludes to trying to achieve balance by some sort of timeline. What we accomplished so far, I think we've had a fairly decent year, is that when soon after I first got there, we brought forward a plan called No Budget, No Pay. And that's in response to the fact that for four years previously, the US Senate had not produced a budget at all. We've been just slipping along from continuing resolutions to stopgap budget major one after another over the years. The House would actually pass budget proposals if it could stop there. So, no budget, no pay means if the Senate side or the House side doesn't produce a budget by a given date, then why should the legislators keep getting paid for not doing their job? So, that finally shook things up enough where the Senate did indeed finally produce a budget document sometime after that. And so, that gave us a basis to see, here's where people's priorities are. We know from the White House's plan, there isn't really a plan to balance the budget, but we can see the date for ever. We petitioned the President last year about that, saying, "Mr. President, we're not telling you how to do it, when to do it, whatever. We just want to know if you have a plan to balance the budget," because we think it's important. The Ryan Plan shows an attempt to balance it by 2023. So, the White House didn't give us one. The Senate shows also imbalance completely on to maybe year 2030. No budget balance in sight. We believe that it's a moral situation that we should work to achieve, though, because we can't keep asking the future to be a mortgage for our spending currently. So, it's going to be tough, but we did do that. Spending since after I was sworn in has been reduced by about one hundred and fifteen billion dollars. So, that's a step in the right direction. Again, these are big numbers we're fighting with, and it's a big battle royale to try and do this. If you ever watched much on C-SPAN, if you watched the speeches on the House floor from both sides, you know, some of our friends on the other side of the aisle really like to toss the rhetoric on that and accuses of all sorts of things that really aren't our mission, but to try and have fiscal accountability. So, that finally culminated last December with a budget that was passed, the Murray-Ryan Plan. Senator Patty Murray from Washington and Paul Ryan came together and hatched out with the various budget coffers to get a budget done. Is it a perfect budget? By far, no. I didn't like several things about it. But what I did like about it, and I thought was really important in achieving that, is that we moved away from continuing resolutions, which kind of takes the power, the impetus away from the House of Representatives, which spending and tax bills are supposed to originate constitutionally in the House. We've been effectively shirking that responsibility by turning it over to continuing resolutions, which puts much more of the power of spending priorities in the hands of the White House or the Treasury. That isn't really how it's supposed to work. So, what we'll have is a process now that shows that we can get this done, and it'll be done in a public way. It'll be on C-SPAN. It'll be on committee when that's televised. It's a place where people can actually have input to it, instead of it happening in a hurry when it's a last-minute emergency measure, which drives all of us crazy. It isn't a good way to govern. So, what that means, we have a budget document, we have a budget outline, that the Appropriations Committee then, so to speak, puts the meat on the bones of that and starts working through what would be called different portions in the Appropriations Committee process. So, now, that shows that we have line items that have to be justified as to why those need to be in there in our spending plan. That's accountability. So, I think that was a really significant step in that December budget document. Now, there were things about it that I didn't like that we had to go back and fix, but we will fix those smaller items, because how they got in there, you know, it gets the size and scope of the omnibus plan, sometimes things get in there that you'd have to vote for the whole package or against the whole package. I thought the whole package is important enough to move the ball, because the process is so important. So, we're making, we're making good things happen with that. And that's going to be ongoing here the rest of the spring and through the summer on appropriations. So, watch for that. Again, we'll go through here, but on that, if you know things that need to be corrected as to that as well. Farm Bill passes, yeah? Another unbriefed process there. It had been ongoing for probably a year and a half of negotiations before I was sworn in. The farm bill, twenty percent of the farm bill, eighty percent of it is the food stamp or SNAP program. So, what ended up happening there is the combined reductions in spending in the farm bill was approximately twenty-four billion over its like. Fairly modest. Sixteen billion came from the reduction in the farm portion of it in the form of the direct payment program, which was eliminated. No longer automatic direct payments for these commodities. Instead, what it has shifted to is an insurance program that the farmer has to participate and pay into and have skin in the game on that. The insurance program is there to put a floor in on risk for either precipitous drop in prices or other disasters that can happen. The importance of that is that, I think, and I think the goal, the policies of the federal government over the years, USDA, has been that food should be produced in this country to sustain ourselves. And so, that safety net is there to ensure that there's a stable supply of the bread baskets, strategic props that need to come from this country rather than importing them all. And so, that's why, partly why this program exists. So, I think we've achieved moving in a direction that has more accountability, more buy-in for farmers on that. Again, it's a progressive move towards the kind of independence I think we should have. On the food stamp side, again, the sixteen billion dollars of reductions of twenty percent of the program. On the food stamp side, by change of the heating oil program, we've achieved an eight billion dollar reduction in the size of the eighty percent of the program. So, it's pretty modest, honestly. But when you hear the caterwaul you hear from Washington DC or LA Times and other media, you would think that somehow we're pushing people off of the cliff there, where the program has expanded a lot in the last five, six, seven years, has really needs to have some accountability put in place. So, automatic payment increases. Or the worst part is some of the fraud going on, where you've seen that in some cases, ten percent of those folks that handle SNAP program are in on the fraud. You can come in with a hundred dollars worth of value, sell it for fifty dollars cash, and then that hundred dollars is transferred to someone else on the black market. That is not what the program is for. I think we all, as Americans, want to help those folks that have the real true deed. But the fraud is what offends us, those that earn and make a living. You know, they have their struggles at home when they're sitting at their kitchen table, hashing out their taxes, their finances, how they're going to send their kids through with college tuition or just to be able to go on a fishing trip, when they see this kind of fraud going on. So, when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about the hard-working taxpayer also, who has to foot the bill for these things and has to be, I think, made to feel right that their government is working for them. So, modest changes to it, again, it's a battle royale to do anything without what they would call an entitlement program. That's an area we'll have to look at long-term, is other types of entitlements if we ever hope to achieve balance, because they're becoming about two-thirds of the national budget. So, I tremble for what Social Security will look like in the future if we don't find some ways to tweak that, to make it's long-term stability, because it is about stability for those folks that receive it, especially starting maybe about fifteen, twenty years from now, those folks coming into the program then, where we have a lot less payers into the program than soon will be pulling out of the program. And so, we have to be sure that eligibility is correct, perhaps age of retirement is correct, fitting with the times. So, these are things, tweaks we can do, and we'll, and as that issue comes forward, we'll come explain them to the American people. Our international situation. We've got a powder keg in the Middle East. We have big problems with Ukraine. The other nations of this world are looking at the United States. Are we leaders or are we not? Are we going to have a firm stance with how people interact within their own countries or what they would do to exert their forces on other nations? Now, do we want to be the police force for the whole world? Do we want to be intervening in every possible skirmish?
Not at all.
No, not at all. But if we're projecting strength instead of, I would submit, the kind of weakness that we've shown lately, we're projecting strength, a lot less people are going to try and test us or test themselves in areas like the China Sea there, where you have this little skirmish between China and Japan or those islands down there they're fighting over, or our good ally, Israel there. Does Israel feel like we're going to have their back or that they're going to have to go it alone?
No.
If they have to go it alone, they might have to take more extreme measures than if they know they have the United States in their column as a silent enforcer. So, by us not projecting strength in the world, other situations can come to a head much sooner than we want. Then what kind of outbreak could we have in the powder kegs of the Middle East? What will North Korea do at any given day? Can anybody predict that? So, what do our European allies think of us? Do we have an interest in the Ukraine? I think we have at least some level of interest, because Ukraine would like to be part of a more Western, European-type economy and culture, not just the vassal of the Russians. We've already ceded, I guess, on the global stage Crimea, but I don't think the Russian bear's appetite is going to be satisfied, because they're looking back at the old Soviet Union map and thinking, "We would like to go back to them." Putin will keep moving in that direction if he sees weakness. So, the sanctions that are necessary need to be very full-throated, as the sanctions for Iran should not have been let up, because Iran is now not the case, and the centrifuges are still spinning. How long till Iran is able to produce it in their device? Do we really know? Do we want to know? We tell you that we want to know, but we shouldn't want to see that result. Israel will be very keenly interested in that, and if they see that there's no ability to predict what their future is, they will have to go to a level of defensiveness that, again, if the US is not backing them and doing what we can with sanctions, they have to move perhaps more extreme and more sooner in that direction than what happened, had we projected that's right. That's the way I see it. So, you know, this is your town hall here tonight. There's just a few things that I'd like to set up as food for thought or topic, many, many others. We're working very hard to get better results with the VA. Veterans Administration has a shameful record from the top down in administering what our veterans have earned and deserved with the backlog of cases. And it's becoming a national story more and more so. You may have seen in the news today where Arizona, the hospital down there, has had, I believe it was forty patient deaths in the recent years. Senator McCain and I think the other Arizona senator, both are going to be looking into this. I hope they have hearings in Washington and drag these people in and ask them, "What the heck are you people doing?" I hope I can take part in one. I hope it's a joint hearing between House and Senate, because my team works very hard to try and address veterans' issues, where, again, we have one almost infamous case here where the veteran has been waiting since nineteen seventy-eight to have this case resolved. And they hide his paperwork, they lose his paperwork, they... As much to tell them, "There's no way we're ever going to get this done for you." Well, recently, we were able, after all these years, to give him at least thirty percent disability, at least get him into the column of having to acknowledge that he is deserving of this. Now, I don't want to go into the personal issues of anyone veteran here, but he really ought to be at a hundred, that's where he's at. So, we're not going to rest until this is resolved. I mean, that Oakland, the Oakland facility down there? It was discovered they had tens of thousands of files stashed in room closets and janitorial rooms and things of that nature. That's only half of it. We come across here, there's another stash that was from nineteen ninety-four that many of the veterans have since passed away, and they shred those, whereas maybe their spouse would have been deserving of a benefit from that. That spouse is no longer going to see that. Not only is this shameful, but some heads need to roll in this, because this is fraud that's going on sanctioned by our government. So, we'll look for hearings on this coming up pretty soon, pivoting off of the Arizona situation, but a lot more of our House Committee Chairman, who, when I see him, I whisper another few facts. Here's what's going on in Oakland, but it's really hard, it's really hard to fight this entrenched bureaucracy, because it resists every... It tells, you know, you might, you might think that, you know, well, of course, I'll respond to a congressman, right? No, you ought to hear the bat chatter when we get to the names they call us behind the scenes, when people would tell us.
Well, we're seeing what happened with Lois Lerner. Right role, huh?
Well, you know?
They just tried spike that here today.
Right, right. So, the way we manage ourselves in the House, again, when we have these investigations, gentlemen, talking about IRS and Lois Lerner, we have to be very measured in having clear cards on this. Otherwise, we'll get accused by the media of like, "Oh, it's a witch hunt, oh, you guys are just being political, oh, just this, oh, just that." Well, the evidence is pretty clear on a very informed basis to probably most Americans. There's something wrong here. There's very, something very fishy about what they're doing. But it has to be a very methodical process, because it's like going through court, it's like going through a prosecution, where you have to be ironclad, otherwise you're going to lose your case, especially here, where maybe our opponents will just throw any amount of deceptions. I mean, the ranking member on the Government Oversight Committee from Maryland there, he's Cummings. It's looking like he is complicit in the email stream between Lerner and IRS in targeting individual organizations for scrutiny by the IRS. Now, when this has come out, they're not the investigations, the so-called witch hunt or the waste of time, why are you guys doing this?
Not a smidgen of it.
He denied it. He denied any knowledge of it.
So, yeah. Chairman Issa, who's getting called all sorts of names, is working to turn over these stones and get this exposed. So, at some point, we need to have some kind of special prosecutor or something come in. But, you know, is it going to have to come from the Department of Justice, you know, Eric Holder?
No.
You know, there needs to be some kind of force outside. This is what we're learning, is that I don't think we've ever seen as shameful of a self-covering of administration here. There's got to be some kind of independence between whether it's the White House or the courts or the two houses of Congress, independent people come in and say, "This doesn't smell right." I mean, it's a question of why they're one by the DOJ.
So, when does that happen? When does that accountability start? When Holder can be in contempt of Congress and there's no accountability to him, when does that change there's accountability?
The... Sorry to interrupt you. No, sorry. No, I was transitioning to that. So, Lois Lerner has already been held in contempt in a committee vote, and when we get back here next week, sometime very near future, I think it's going to go to a House floor vote, and it will probably be upheld.
You're going to take her pension?
Yeah, why is she still getting paid?
You're going to take her pension? She needs it taken.
Well, I don't think anybody that has done what they... When they break the law like that, they don't deserve a pension or any other benefits.
They're going to jail.
What we're legally allowed to do is something I still need to learn, is that something that can be stripped? I would think it's appropriate if that's something that can come to a congressional vote, I would opt for that.
Well, you have the power of the purse in the, in the House.
We have the power of the purse, but we don't have the power to strip what is an entitlement in some cases. So, this is something we'll be working on and we'll be seeking to do. If we're able to do it, there's not some legal problem with that, or is it unconstitutional? And that's what we're going to do.
I mean, if Eric Holder's been held in contempt, I don't see how... I think he should be stripped of any authority for...
I think Holder's day is coming.
He's a traitor.
Because he's, he's not been, you know, supposedly the nation's top cop when you selectively enforce laws, as you see that for your political agenda, when your bosses tell you from the White House. It makes a travesty of all laws and makes the American public... We don't know where you stand anymore if they can selectively enforce laws. I mean, how many laws could we be breaking sitting here or our car sitting in the parking lot or driving here today? I mean, I do not like legislation that is not clear about, not just its intent, but how it's carried out as an enforced law. If, you know, you've all heard of where laws, like, "Well, we know that's not really... X might be against the rules, but we're not enforcing that." But what happens when a new person comes in and decides to be an enforcer, something you may have been doing on your farm, your ranch, your small business, your home, you know, building a deck on your backyard? They decided to enforce that against you because they were waiving it before. Now you're subject to fines and penalties or jail time? You have to know where you stand with the law, and that's why we need to make clear laws. And so, my record has been one that if it doesn't seem clear, if it doesn't seem like it's going to uphold liberty or people's rights to know where they stand, then I'm going to vote against it. There's a lot of no voting in the California state legislation. In the Congress, we haven't been thankful, a bill machine of just cranking out legislation. You hear critiques of us saying like, "Well, this is the least productive Congress ever." Well, I don't measure by the number of bills we've done. I measure by the amount of progress we make towards trying to balance the budget or trying to strengthen our defense or our place in the world or streamline regulations so that our economy can rebound. That's the type of progress I would have. And so, I think the vast majority of bills coming out of the House have been towards that, towards better energy production or the use of our resources, which is a really important thing for us in this part of the state, with timber, with mining, with water resources, with agriculture. That's why I asked the member of the, and I'm sitting as a member of the Agricultural Committee and the Natural Resources Committee. These are very important to our part of the world. So, next question.
The House is the most powerful branch of government. They're not all co-equal. The House is the closest to the people. You have the power of impeachment, you have the power of the purse, and you have oversight. And I'd like to know, since, for the last five years, this lawless Obama administration, why haven't charges of impeachment been brought against him? I know the Senate probably wouldn't convict as it is now, but it would expose a lot more things that Obama has done to people that aren't aware.
We are supposed to have a lot of those powers vested, and they are constitutionally vested in us. But when you have basically broken courts that override those, the courts have a lot more power than they should, and the White House has usurped a lot more power than what is in place. We have to go to court and sue over that.
You can't impeach him or bring charges against him for treason or dereliction of duty or...
Well, there's lawsuits underway against the White House. One, for example, is selective enforcement of Obamacare. One of the ones we're working on as well is that Obamacare itself was passed unconstitutionally because it did not originate properly in the House of Representatives.
That's supposed to be, we're supposed to hear by June on that one.
I hope the decision is read out pretty soon on that, yes. And so, is that enough to validate the whole thing?
I hope so.
It's a disaster.
It depends how you read it.
So, does it validate nothing, but they have to go back and do it correctly? See, all this stuff passed, that Dodd-Frank, you know, and the president has caused for the financial community, but it inherently hasn't safeguarded anything else. The litany of paperwork and nonsense from Dodd-Frank, just simple things like brain trading transactions, stock board trading, and his nightmares for that and anybody. This all passed in that interim, in that period of two thousand eight to two thousand ten.
When they had complete control, and that's when they shoved Obamacare through.
That, Dodd-Frank, and the other fun stuff like Cash for Hunkers and things like that. So, it went past these days. So, if Obamacare isn't validated, then we can go back to the drawing board and really focus on what we should be trying to do in the area of healthcare. What was this stated goal supposedly of Obamacare? Helping out the uninsured. How would we best help the uninsured in the marketplace? Having them be able to get policies that are affordable to them and have more choices?
Have like risk policies available, where they pay a little bit more and still get them to work.
Then you have people that are, well, if you have a strong economy, more people would be able to participate in that. So, it's the uninsured, and it's those folks that are unable to get insurance because of pre-existing conditions.
But most of them still don't have insurance.
Because it's not working.
It's estimated that only two and a half million uninsured are now covered for a trillion dollars' worth of expense.
Yeah, and when they claim, when they claim that the number's pushing eight million insured...
Have you gotten a correct...
Well, there's three hundred and ten million Americans. You're bragging about eight million people are insured, that's about three percent.
Six million were kicked out.
And they're counting people that... And they're, they're counting people that are newly qualified for Medicaid because they're raping the middle class as the more enrollees.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very frustrating situation. So the focus should be, and, you know, there's those of us in the House that are working on plans to address that. We had Dr. Ben Carson sit.